First speaker I have on here is Karen Daden.
Hi, my name is Karen Daden, 302 Curtis Avenue, here at Stratford. This town's motto is "More from Forest to Shore." The ordinance before you tonight in regards to the youth campground at Short Beach will do just that for the youth of this town. It will give them another venue. The Short Beach Park Commission, of which I am a member, approved this project over three years ago and brought it before the previous council, which approved it. Since then, we've researched into the possibility of youth camping in Short Beach Park. The location and department approvals began. The area chosen is considered a dead zone with dead brush and trees and no wildlife to speak of. The conservation officer, both the past and the current one, stated the area at the north end of Short Beach, behind where the bathrooms are, would be a good area for a low-profile, leave-no-trace, do-no-harm youth campground. This area is a distance from where the piping plovers are. And they don't like to go in this area, there's no water or food for them. After ensuring that all appropriate town departments gave their approval, the commission went out, looked for volunteers to build this campground with no taxpayer dollars. I'll repeat, no taxpayer dollars. We found these volunteers in the form of our very own youth here in town. I would like to introduce you to them as they are the future of this town. Sea Scout, Stratford's newly-formed Sea Scout Ship 101. Stand up. My crew, after getting permission, camped overnight and laid out the site in early November. They have spent every Saturday since then out there, clearing the dead brush and outlining where the temp platforms will go, and formulated rules and regulations from the perspective of a youth. The commission also found Boy Scout Troop 71, who is not here tonight, they're little guys, so they have to be in bed. They came and did their fair share, but they also came with a landscaper. The landscaper taught us what to cut down and what not to cut. Since it has been warm winter, new growth has already started in this area. This area will be green and clean. In addition to what is in this ordinance, the Short Beach Park Commission, acting on our Sea Scout suggestions, will put in place the following rules and regulations, and this is, there'll probably be more. One, no cutting of brush or trees will be allowed. All wood and kindling must be brought in by youth group. Any leftover will be left in a communal wood area. Do no damage. Two, any trash must be bagged and then taken away, not put in a dumpster or a trash can, but taken away from Short Beach. Leave no trace. Three, a Short Beach Park Commissioner will inspect the area to ensure it is properly taken care of and respected. The advantage of this area for our youth is learning to be stewards of this incredible shoreline that Stratford finds itself on. The Sea Scouts and Sacred Heart have formed a partnership and are beginning the process of putting, of building an observation and tagging deck for the horseshoe crabs, and can also put together programs that are age-appropriate to whatever youth group is there. The one thing I do want to emphasize, I was not here at the last meeting that you people had, for obvious reasons, and I would like to say this. This is an all-inclusive, all-youth groups in this town that are officially recognized, and that's for insurance purposes. With adult leadership, adults who have had current youth protection training will be allowed to use this. This is to protect the town and the youth. It's very important. I urge you to pass this ordinance posthaste in order that we get our donated materials and hardware from Home Depot and Lowe's ASAP, and volunteers can complete the campground for an April 1st opening. Thank you.
Next on the list is Linda Palermo.
I spoke my piece earlier, but I'll reiterate it. I'm in favor of the campsite. I'm in favor of all the things you want to do for the kids. I stress something with regard to safety. I realize there'll be counselors there. They will have forms of identification on them, but I also ask that you include that the children that are in attendance in the campground also have something to identify that they belong to that group, and we don't have drifters coming in. That's one of the things I'd like to see you add. Thank you.
Next up is John Rich.
Good evening. John Rich, 68 Willow Avenue. I'm coming tonight to speak to you in favor of the ordinance for the youth campground, but I want to speak more than just about the campground and the due diligence that the Ship 101 has done to make this area a place for youth to go camping. I want to talk about their overall experience. When I was in my youth, I was a member of an Explorer Post here in town. It was sponsored by the police department at the time. These programs develop all aspects when it comes to people developing their life. They develop citizenship, they develop leadership. But in order for their programs to work, they need an overall balance. There needs to be the social aspect, there needs to be the outdoor aspect. All of these help to build well-rounded youth. My years in Explorer Post 77 led me to my career in community service. Thirty years volunteering for this town, for Stratford EMS, and now being involved in town projects to try and make our environment and our town just a little better place. So we need to support these programs in all their aspects, including their social aspects as well, so that they're successful, so that they can bring us the type of citizens that we want in our community, that understand the values of protecting our environment, that understand the values of sharing amongst their other citizens, and being able to provide to make the community better. This is one aspect of their program, but it's an important aspect, and we need to support it. We need to support all these youth groups that are helping to develop our citizens of tomorrow. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that did not get on the sign-up sheet that care to wish to speak on the testimony of the campground? Next up is Tom Dugas.
Tom Dugas, 2136 Huntington Road, Stratford. I was driving down Main Street, Stratford, and Mr. Owens flagged me down to tell me that the property at Tavern Rock Road could be changed to business, and he said it would be nice to see a tavern in there with like fifteen tables. So then he said, "If the developer ups his offer, will you up hers?" And I said, "Yes." And that was the end of the conversation. Thank you.
Thank you. This public hearing is actually for the campground at Short Beach, so if you, please keep your comments limited to that. Next up would be Laura Harrington Harrigan.
I'm here to speak on the Tavern Rock property. We have additional signatures, petition, we're up to about 250 now. I'm just basically, I'm simply here to remind this council of the underhandedness of this deal. The former council was-
Point of order, Mr. Chairman, this young lady is talking about an item that is not on your agenda.
Yes, this is supposed to be the ordinance committee meeting. This hearing is actually supposed to be on the campground at Short Beach, actually.
Is the next one, is this one to follow my Tavern Rock property? Is that going to follow?
It's on the town council meeting.
Mr. Chairman, the-
Thank you very much.
Ma'am, ma'am, what's going, what's happening is after this meeting ends-
I understand.
There's going to be a WPCA meeting-
Okay, so we're just in the wrong venue here.
And then we'll go into the public-
Very good.
Sorry for the confusion. Bob Jaikle?
Hello again, Bob Jaikle, 175 Twin Oaks Terrace. And now I get to talk to you about something that I could talk about for hours if you wanted to, but I really, Karen spoke very eloquently about how we got here so far. But I wanted to take a moment and thank you all for the people that have been possible. Working through town government isn't always easy, but when it's worth it, you put in the time, effort, and energies to make it happen. And I want to thank all the people that have had a part in saying yes, all the boards, commissions, starting with our Short Beach Park Commission, wasn't too hard to convince a bunch of people who want the best for the beach to decide that the campground might be a good idea for the youth in our camp, you know, in our town, to have a campground there, bringing it over to our zoning commission, where Alan had a hand in helping us walk it through. I appreciate that. And for everybody who's served on this council or in any commission or department that had to say yes, I really want to thank you for your time and effort and approval and your belief in what we're doing down there. Also, I'd like to thank the adults for 101. We just actually started our group within the last year, and it's taken a lot of dedication to be committed to an effort where there's only a handful of kids that want to be part of it and believe in what you're doing, and they want to be part of the program that you're wanting to put together for them. So I thank the adults for that, but most importantly, I want to thank our scouts here. Where, for those of you that haven't been involved in scouting, when you get the Boy Scouts and Explorer Units and our Sea Scout ship, it's not about the parents doing it. It's not about the leaders, the adult leaders doing it, it's about us providing some direction and guidance for the kids to do what they believe in and projects they want to be dedicated and committed to. And we camped out in early November, and thank God Mother Nature was a fan of camping in November at the beach, but they're the ones that walked out the campground. They're the ones that decided where the platform should be. They're the ones that helped it. We just helped guide them along the way, and every Saturday, rain or shine, we've taken very few off. I just want to recognize the kids that have really worked extremely hard to make this campground a reality, and I am sure all the youth groups that get to utilize this campground will come to appreciate the efforts that Ship 101 and Troop 71 put in to make it a reality. Thank you.
That ends the public-
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
May I have just 15 seconds to just clarify something out here and stop some misinformation about the public forum? I think we owe it to the people to let them know what happened. And all I want to say to everyone is, thank you for coming out. I noticed a lot of people just came right before the seven o'clock point to speak tonight for the town council. Now, there will be a town council meeting this evening. It's a special meeting, and it's happening after the WPCA, and WPCA is happening after ordinance, which we're in right now, is the public forum. There was a public forum for the town council that was at 5:45 PM tonight, and that's, I believe some of you were here for that. Unfortunately, that public forum ended, but what you can do is come to the next public forum on the Tavern Rock property and speak at that. That would be March-
I'll call him up, 13.
Yeah, March 13th.
We can-
But the agenda's not set, but you can come and speak to the council again then, but I just want to let you know, if you're here for that public forum, that already happened at 5:45 tonight.
Point of order-
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman, to put Councilman Posner's mind at ease, it's my intention, when we get to that point at the council meeting, that I will ask the chair to allow the attorneys and parties involved regarding the Tavern Rock property to address the council.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Point of order, Mr. Leclair. There are a number of people here, I think, that are here to speak regarding items on the town council that were not here for the public forum due to the way it was set up. I guess they just didn't understand. Would, if they have specific interest in these things, would we be able to call them up as well?
Can you use the microphone?
So unless they have a stake in the vested interest, they can't speak, correct?
If you've concluded your public comment for the town council meeting, I think they are not supposed to speak.
Okay, thank you.
All right, well, that ends the public forum for the ordinance committee. So I want to call to order the regularly-scheduled ordinance committee for February 27, 2017.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the minutes for the public hearing and special meeting of January 30, 2017, and the public hearing and meeting minutes of October 24, 2016.
Second. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, ten zero, or nine, eight zero.
Okay, unfinished business or tabled items?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I'd like to have item B struck from the agenda.
Yes.
I'm sorry, I'd like to take item 3B off the table, please.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, thank you.
All in favor, or discussion?
Aye.
Aye.
No. Yes.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I'd like to strike item 3B from the agenda. It's been on the agenda for a year, almost a year.
Is it time for discussion?
Do we have a second?
Is there a second for striking?
No second.
No second, that fails.
Okay.
I'd just like to make a comment about this. I'm in favor of leaving it on the table because even though I approved of it at the time when Susan Collier introduced it, I believe we were told that the new finance director would have some input, and thus far, I haven't heard any input, but I think we should just leave it on the table till we hear from the new finance director about this particular approach to purchasing.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Chase?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would echo Councilwoman Intezzo's remarks and requests to the chair that he ask or contact the finance director for his opinion. It does not have to be done this evening. This is kind of a, I know he's here. It doesn't have to be done this evening to give him time to review it and make a recommendation.
It's ordered.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to put it back on the table.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Owen.
If there's no other requests to take any of the other unfinished business, tabled items off the table, I would make a request that we move on to item four, new business.
Sorry, I'd like to make a-
Point of order, number E, I'd like to ask the finance director or the chief operating officer in regard to competitive bidding, hiring professional contractors. They were to do an inventory of all the individuals in town that are hired as contractors.
Point of order, please. Just, I think we need to take that off the table first. So I'd like to make a motion to take that item E off the table, 3E.
Yes, quickly, to take this item off the table.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye. Thank you, sir. Jay, just, you may recall this item from an email that I shared with you. This may be an ETA on when that inventory could be shared with the-
Jay Wahlberg, the director of finance for Towns Stratford, here to answer any question that, you know, may come up here, so I'm not quite sure the questions, so.
Oh, just, I guess, for tonight, confirm, confirm that your office is in receipt of the request and that you're gonna, you're in the process of doing a study for the inventory of the town, of the professionals that the town has hired on a contracted basis rather than, say, on a part-time or full-time basis?
Okay. I'm kind of on, excuse me, I'm kind of on the spot here, so I'll certainly, my office will always comply to the wishes of this council. Kind of caught on surprise here, so what is the wish of the council?
To expedite, I'll, possibly I did not include Jay on the emails and only directed it to Chris Timiak, so-
Okay.
Let's return it to the table and we'll, we'll talk offline.
Certainly, I'm sure he'll confer with me on it, and certainly it's, you know, we will incur on it.
Thank you, Jay.
Mr. Ponte?
The purpose of this ordinance was a concern that the mayor, and not even this mayor, but any mayor in our charter has the opportunity to hire whoever they want at whatever price they decide to pay with no council oversight, as long as it's called a professional contract, for a professional, a contract for somebody with professional skills. And I had asked the town attorneys, because an issue came up with the repeat use of a consultant, and the repeat use seemed to look like a position. In fact, the person was given a title, given business cards, given a phone, and given an office, and it seemed to be a way of skirting the council's authority in terms of creating and removing positions. So that's why this ordinance was on here, because I don't think any mayor should have that ability. So Mr. Khan and I had co-sponsored this ordinance, and we wanted to know if there, what sort of, if there was, if you could do an analysis, and I saw, I was in on the email that Mr. Khan sent, and he had asked specifically, I believe, for a count of the number of professional contractors that we've had in the last couple of years, and how much they've made off of the town. And so we could see if these positions were for specific finite tasks, or if there was repeated use and therefore an intention to skirt the council's authority. So that's the sort of information that we want. I'm surprised that you didn't get that email, because I got it, and, and so, so I hope you can get, and the idea was that we would have that information for this meeting. So I would hope that we would, we'll have that information shortly. Thank you.
Unfortunately, I didn't receive it.
I understand that.
And certainly, when I do, I will comply with it.
Okay, thank you.
Certainly, I'll look into what we have done in the past to report to the council.
Mr. Wahlberg, I just wanted to say on the record that what's happening right now is in no way a testament to the professionalism that you've shown from day one and before. I think that you are doing an exemplary job, and I'm saddened to find out that information is not being passed to you. And that is the bigger concern here. I think that this issue with hiring people, specifically, there's a lot going on on both sides of the House, both the town side and BOE, which we don't have a lot of control over. I think that these kind of things are happening, and this sets a precedent, and I'm interested to see what the study would, would, but I don't know if, I don't know if it's going to make a difference to me, because I believe it's, what I've seen so far from administration throughout town is just a skirting of the rules, and then the, the actual putting someone on the spot here who doesn't see an email, it all looks shady and underhanded. So I don't like that. Like, I wish you had that information, and I wish we had that information, and because no one came forward with that information and forwarded that to you, that makes me think that this is a fire that needs to be put out, and that the, the data and stuff is only going to reinforce what we're seeing. I think that we're seeing this as being non-transparent, and that's exactly what's just happened, is this is, this is something we need to address now before the next budget comes.
Mr. Con?
Thank you, Chair. Apologies to Jay. My message to Chris Timiak was sent out on January 30. He did confirm receipt. I sent out a reminder yesterday, and I said, "Hey, Jay and Chris," but unfortunately, Jay was not on the original message. So I'm sorry that you weren't cognizant of it. I have forwarded it to you, and we will talk with Chris about it in short order. So with that, I'd like to put it back on the table.
I can only assure-
Second.
-the council that whatever information that you request will be coming forward, and that's the only thing I can say.
Thank you. We have a motion on the table to- Put it back on the table.
Mitzi, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
No.
No.
Aye.
Roll call.
Roll call.
Roll call?
No.
No. No.
Yes.
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 Endeffort to the chairman, no.
Yes.
No.
Yes.
Motion fails.
Backward. Fails. Mr. Ponte?
Mr. Wahlberg, I didn't want, I didn't intend to comment on your professional integrity at all. It was the issue that Ms. Manis said, that I would have expected that to be forwarded and it to be a priority, since it was on the agenda for the last ordinance meeting. It's on the agenda for this ordinance meeting, and it's a simple, it's not a whole study that we need, we just need you to run the numbers. It's a pretty, it's a pretty simple task, so, so thank you very much, though.
I understand, and certainly, once I receive it, I'll analyze it and respond accordingly.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Motion to put the item back on the table?
A second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, make a motion to take item 3D off the table.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So, Mr. Chairman, just to open up discussion on this, this is the ordinance change referral from the January 9th town council meeting, where we were discussing the possibility of having the building needs committee get the spending authority for the Stratford High School project only, to on emergency basis approve change order expenditures up to $50,000, as the current limit is only $5,000. And I'm looking at our agenda here, and it looks like there's an amendment to Chapter 8, Article 1 change orders, at the last page of our package, and it lists an amount of $15,000, but the verbiage in here is not specific to Stratford High School. So I just was wondering if either you or one of the town attorneys can confirm that this page, the intention is for it to be applied to Stratford High, and then we could possibly modify the language and then discuss the $15,000 limit?
Yeah, I drafted, and it's true, it does not limit it only to Stratford High. If that, but if that is the wish of the, of this, of the council ultimately, I think what we'll need to do is have an ordinance separate and apart from the present 8.3, because 8-3- need to do is have an ordinance separate and apart from the present 8.3, because 8-3 deals with emergency situations on any project, which you probably need to take a look at the dollar figure anyhow. The, this, I prepared, I believe it was in response to a suggestion by Mr. Khan at one of the council meetings, and I had it prepared and ponied out for your discussion.
Okay. So one of my concerns is I know that when we initially brought up the discussion for the high school going to a $50,000 limit, there was some side conversations about changing and touching and adjusting other limits. So I think we need to be really clear that when the $50,000 number gets talked about, that it only applies to the high school, which is a $126 million construction project, which is significantly larger than really any other project that we do in town. And so I think this $15,000, like you're suggesting, Attorney Florick, is more specific to the 8.3, you know, mayoral, mayoral power section.
Correct.
So I don't know where we go on the referral from here, because there doesn't seem to be any sort of ordinance numbered or language drafted that's specific to the high school at the $50,000 level. And again, that could be, you know, a discussion point. If that comes back and, you know, we can settle on $25,000 or $35,000, that would be fine, but I don't know that we can really discuss and make any action on item 3D this evening, based on what's in front of us.
You can certainly amend what's in front of you, to provide that it's specific, site-specific to Stratford High School project, and change that $15,000 figure to whatever you had in mind. We can, we can prepare and forward to you another proposed modification of 8.3, but your Stratford High School ordinance would be a separate ordinance, separate and apart from 8.3.
So do we? Mr. Chase?
Yeah. If we, if we try to amend this this evening, would we have to also amend the chapter and article?
I don't think you'd have to amend the chapter. You'd probably, you'd have to amend the section number, it would no longer be 8.3, because you have an existing 8.3.
Because it would seem to me it would be very simple, just to add in, in the, under the bold section, line three, but only if such action is recommended by the Stratford High School Subcommittee and by the Building Needs Committee, and further that the deviation does not exceed the sum of $7,500.
Well, you'd have to also add that this particular ordinance would be site-specific to the Stratford High School renovation program.
Well, saying, so just saying, or, excuse me, just adding the language, the Stratford High School Subcommittee wouldn't suffice?
No, I don't think so. I think you'd wanna make it clear that it's limited to this one project alone.
Okay. If we do amend this this evening, does this need to go back on the table for a ordinance committee public hearing?
No.
Okay. So then, if we amend this this evening, it can go directly back to the council for final approval?
Yes.
Thank you.
Does this need...
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we modify the language presented to us, so that in line two, after Town Engineer, it says "as applies to the Stratford High School renovation project," and then after "recommended," as suggested by Councilman Chase, "recommended by the Stratford High School renovation Subcommittee and the Building Needs Committee," and change the amount to $25,000.
Is there a second to that?
Second.
I'd just like to...
Second.
We can discuss and further modify, once it's been amended and seconded. Thank you, Councilman Harden.
Ms. Entezo?
I'd like to discuss the amendment. I think $25,000 is still too high for, somebody to come in and say, "The cost is this, and that it doesn't have to come before us," that's a lot of money for a change order.
Mr. Chairman, there are, we can, a couple other people speak first, but there are people here from the Stratford High School renovation project, the architect, the general contractor, and our owner's representative from Kreck, who could speak to this, because they're involved in construction projects of similar nature that have higher limits.
Yes, I can, but Ms. Ness?
Hi. I'm not supporting this at all, and I'm gonna tell you why. There is a, after sitting at the last Building Needs and hearing that an entire committee can sign off on entire projects at the schools, and that the chairman of Building Needs can assign to spend money, and that it doesn't have to go before, the council chair doesn't need a signature, now we're taking money away, there's an architect on our town council agenda that we're approving, that was put through through Building Needs, this Building Needs Committee is turned into, in my opinion, a monster. I am not supporting any, they are not an elected council. They, we are elected to spend money, and I'm sorry, these rules are in there for a reason. I have counseled with our town attorney, Mr. Florick specifically, our attorney on council, and I spoke at length about this, and spoke specifically about problems that have happened in the past, when this was not in. Laws are written for a reason, everyone has the best intentions, but there's, there's a history here of abuses, and things that have nothing to do with the people sitting here now, but we need to learn from our history and make sure that that doesn't happen again. I, I understand the spirit of it, I get it, but there is no way, in, in good faith, that I can't go on the advice of the council attorney and the history of what has happened before. I don't think we should be changing the code.
Mr. Ponte?
I just wanna catch up here. I didn't catch all those changes that are proposed, if they could be repeated, and then I have, and then I'd also want to reply to what Ms. Manis said.
Sure. So after Town Engineer...
Yes.
...right in "as applies to the Stratford High School renovation project," and then in line three, where it says "but only if such action is recommended," add in "by the Stratford High School renovation Subcommittee and the Building Needs Committee," and then also, was to change the amount to $25,000.
Okay, thank you. And then, on the other note, I just wanna say that the Building Needs Committee is not an elected committee, but it was appointed by this council. This Building Needs Committee was appointed by this council. So in that sense, it does represent us, the same way that Longbook Park Commission isn't directly elected, or...
Are you speaking about grid?
Well...
I don't think we have 25 grand.
No, 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 but I'm just saying that the point that you, that you made, that it isn't elected, it is appointed by elected, by people who have been elected. Regarding the $25,000, this, this project, if it were any other project that didn't already have a project manager, I would say no to that. But Kreck is a noted project manager, we're lucky to have them, this is a huge project. And I think giving the professionals just a little more leeway is a good idea. It's not a lot of leeway, because $25,000 with respect to the hundred and however much this project is, I always lose track, 140 million, 126 million, but it's not a lot of money. And in those minutes of those meetings, we can look at those minutes and see what's going on, so I think it would be a good idea if the secretary of that committee makes detailed minutes every time something is, is, any time that there's an expenditure, I think that would help us with oversight. But certainly, if $25,000 was misallocated, we would learn pretty quickly. I think the idea is that this wouldn't be holding up the project, though.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Chase?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would also just add that this is strictly limited to the Stratford High School project. It doesn't include any other building projects that the town may enter into. It's strictly for the Stratford High project. My only concern is, I really, I have to say that I do agree with Ms. Entezo, I think $25,000 is too much, but I'll listen to more debate on that issue.
Mr. Chairman, just as a matter of record, I happen to be looking over old minutes. A year ago, we appropriated $65 million for the Stratford High renovation. It is now over $100 million. I just put that in your mind.
Mr. Chairman, let me just correct that, unless you want, I'll, Mr., yes, we appropriated $60 million, and the project is $126 million, the balance being funded by the state of Connecticut. If I may...
Mr. Harden?
I'm kind of offended, and I'm offended by the fact that people are complaining about $25,000 for Stratford High School. It needs to be done. We worry about projects in other areas, we have no problem coming up with $600,000 for a concession stand, $60,000 for a skating rink that maybe only three days people operate, it operated, and people skated on it. So now we're asking for a school that's falling down, it needs to be replaced, and there hasn't been any work done in there in years, and $25,000. Come on, we've wasted more money in this town on other things.
Not me.
Not you, but I'm just saying, the history, we talk about history.
Mr. Chairman, this isn't just $25,000. This is every time there's a work order change, they don't come to us and say, "Oh, it's gonna cost $25,000."
I think if we...
There may be multiple $25,000s, that's the whole point.
And I think we, as a council, will be mindful of it, we'll keep track of it. I mean, if it, if it gets out of control, then I think we'll have to then jump in, but I think we'll be mindful of it and keep an eye on it.
Mr. Llewellyn?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just to clarify a couple of things real quickly, and then I'll ask Ty to come up. So the total project cost is at $126 million, and that's gonna be split 60-40 between us and the state. The reason why the town's capacity to bond for that project is at $65 million, is because on Vicky Soto's school, additional bonding was needed, and both the Subcommittee's and the Building Needs Committee didn't wanna have to come back to the council for a second round of bonding on the job. So that $65 million number, you could argue that it's a little bit artificially high, but it's in there for coverage, so that a second round of bonding and a whole second round of ordinance isn't needed. And then, just to make some comments with regards to the meeting minutes for the Stratford High School project, I know we've had like a general practice where they're a month behind, because we approve them the month behind, but I think since the fourth or fifth meeting, every Stratford High meeting is voice recorded, and when Kreck produces the minutes, they know who the speakers are, and literally like what was said. Like, some of the meeting minutes actually read like a movie script. It's like reading a play. And so the other thing I just wanna say before I bring Ty up, is to my knowledge, this is the first construction project of any size in the town of Stratford, that's been done with a program manager and a construction manager. So Kreck's the program manager, Turner's the construction manager, there's already two layers of financial safeguard and monitoring built into the job. This isn't a project being done by a general contractor, where the costs can run away, and then the contractor runs in and gives us a bill that doubles the cost of the project, which has happened before in the past, and Ms. Manis isn't wrong for being concerned, because that has happened in the past, but the way this project team is set up, there are already safeguards in place. With regards to this money, this is basically for like immediate spending. Once the formal change orders are put together, they'll be presented to Building Needs, the council will still do final approval. What this does is this allows the Subcommittee and then the Building Needs Committee, in conjunction with the mayor, to authorize money to be expended, so that there aren't construction delays that happen. And then, once final cost can be ascertained, the change orders are still fully presented. This by no means circumvents any, any step in the process. And then via yourself, Mr. Chair, I'd like to bring up Ty from Turner, and Ty, if you can just speak to the, the dollar value and the, the sort of emergency limit for, is that project in Wilton?
Yes. Uh-huh. Yes, my name's Ty Trigellus, I'm with Turner Construction, at the Water View Drive, Shelton, Connecticut. This is, this is really very typical on all our other public school projects. Usually, it's, in fact, it's only a building committee that has the authorization to spend funds with, that are within the overall project budget. We're doing a $40 million project in Wilton, it's an elementary school project, and there the building committee has an authorization up to $50,000. So just to put things in perspective, this is not intended to be a, an avenue for all of the changes. I think we just want to stress that these are the ones that are actually critical in terms of timing. Put things in perspective, if you believe in escalation, and if you believe that escalation is in the 3% to 4%, one day of a delay in the decision-making process on a project of this scale is about $15,000. So if we pay, if, if the project has to stop, which in some cases is the case, if we are coming out of the ground and foundations, and we have a problem with some of the soils, or more contamination, or think, something of that nature, and we have to wait days or weeks, or worst case, a month, before we can get a resolution, the downside of that is many-fold the risk of this change order. So I just wanna put that in, in perspective for you, just, just so that you can appreciate. And it compounds from there, because once you do get that kind of delay, then that puts the project in, in a different timeframe in terms of potentially winter weather, and it opens up the, the town to all kinds of other claims associated with a delay. So it's really, it's protecting, we're trying to protect you from a bigger downside, and it, the intent is really only to use this when, when it is an emergency. There will be many small changes that can wait, but it's some of the potentially bigger changes in the beginning of the project, when we're on what's called a critical path.
Mr. Chase?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just for some clarification to Mr. Llewellyn, did I understand you to say that the approval would still come to the council?
Correct.
Okay. Then I only have one question. My mind is sort of put at ease, but I do have one more question. What if the change order, the Building Needs approves it, they go ahead and do what needs to be done, it comes to the council, and the council ejects it? What happens then? I don't, I'm not trying to put you on the spot. Would you know, sir?
Yes, well typically, the changes are reviewed, the overview, but the approval of the mayor would have to withstand, and it would just be, I guess, an information, bringing you up to speed as to the overall disposition of individual changes, but more importantly, all of the changes.
Thank you. Just to, just to add to what Mr. Trigellus has said, I believe even in an emergency basis, we would still get input from Kreck as our program manager, so he would still be part of advising the mayor, the administration, whoever's making the decision as to whether or not the true emergency exists, and that this is our only means of moving forward without causing a delay or impact to the project.
Ms. Ness?
Based on what was shared and the debate that's heard, I'd like to hear, Mr. Florick represents the town council, and I'd like to know your legal opinion on this ordinance, and whether you think it's in our best interest to approve this request.
The original 8.3, as I told you before, was put into the code because of a experience we had with a, with a prior Building Needs Committee. We found that unbeknownst to the council, there were change orders getting approved at Building Needs that were never coming to the council. And from recollection, it increased the project on one school from an awarded bid of about $10 million to over $11 million. And so that's why we put this provision in the code, because it is the elected officials, the council, that has the, the power of the purse, not people who are not elected, who happen to be on a Building Needs Committee. Now you'll notice, when we put it in, it gave... needs committee. Now, you'll notice, when we put it in, it gave, not a building needs committee, but it gave the mayor the right, or the power to approve change orders under certain circumstances. We wanted it to be a different branch of government. I, I feel more comfortable with it, that it's a different branch of government, that it's not as when this ordinance was first approved, it was $50,000, the building needs committee could do it. I didn't feel comfortable about that at all. More comfortable if there's a, if the mayor, who is a different branch of government and who is an elected official, makes that determination in the limited circumstances that we have here, extraordinary conditions, unforeseen contingencies, et cetera, et cetera. However, and I'm cognizant of what, what's said here about the cost of delay. I've been involved in a lot of school projects. I never had one shut down totally. Never, no matter what's found. Also, the, the council can call a special meeting on 24 hours' notice. If an emergency is necessary, that can usually be accomplished fairly easily. Not that I want to drag you people out every night more than you're out, but in, in a true emergency situation, which would result in a serious delay, then that can be worked around, that can be accomplished. However, having said that, I do feel more comfortable that it is not, at least the way it's proposed here, it is not the building needs committee that has the unilateral authority to make the approval, but the mayor, who, like I said, is a, an elected, an elected official.
To follow up with this conversation, it says that the action would be recommended by the SHS renovation Subcommittee and building needs committee, and in the opinion of the mayor. So is there something specific that needs to be amended in there to satisfy and get a favorable recommendation from you as our lawyer?
Do you, I'm not sure what, what problem you're highlighting. The way I read it is, yeah, the way it's set up now is the Subcommittee and the building needs committee need to recommend that because of the circumstances set forth here, there's a problem. The mayor then has a de novo or unilateral look at it, and if the mayor feels, based on the advice of the town engineer, that that in fact is true, then the mayor has the authority to approve a change order without it coming to the council, up to $25,000.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Pott.
I, I only have one concern, and that is that here we're saying that the Sub, the Stratford High School Subcommittee and the building needs committee, it's an and, right, not an or...
Correct.
Would need to approve it. And that's two committees, hopefully you'll have quorums at those meetings, rather than just one council, one special council meeting. And so I guess I'd like to hear from Mr. Llewellyn why it would be set up that way, rather than, I mean, at the council meetings, with this council, we've always had a quorum. It hasn't been a problem.
Well, for two reasons. First, it would be limited just to Stratford High School, and two, I think the conversation and the flow would go quicker if you had people who are already well acquainted and have knowledge of, of what's going on with the project.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Manis?
I have a question regarding a comment that was made, Mr. Llewellyn. If you could clarify, that you said that there could be two to three special meetings a week if this was not approved by special order in the last building needs, or in one of the meetings with Stratford High Subcommittee, that you told them that there could be two to three special meetings for council a week if we didn't approve this? Was that...
There, there could be. If, if Ty were to discover an impacting condition on, say, a Monday, a Wednesday, and a Thursday, and each of them needed to be addressed that day and immediately to not impact the project, then we would have special meetings on Tuesday, Thursday, and Friday night to address those issues.
The lower the threshold, I think, the, the more meetings there could potentially be.
Anyone else?
We'd obviously try and package them.
Mr. Collins?
Thank you, Chair. Having a background in risk analysis, and I understand the costs of waiting an extra few days would easily exceed the cost of this special permission of, say, $25,000. And then to avoid the cost of putting on hold a part of the project, if not all the project, seems, that risk seems to exceed the risk of any abuse related to this $25,000 special mayor approving. So I agree with how Allen amended the paragraph, and I see its benefit in keeping the project on time and avoiding any undue costs from having people stand around while you're waiting for approval.
Mr. Chairman, I would move the question.
Second.
All those in favor of...
Roll call.
Of moving the question.
What's that? All those, Ms. Flor?
My fault.
I assume the question is to refer the ordinance as amended to the council with a favorable recommendation?
That's correct.
Correct.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 We're doing that right now, right?
We just voted to move the question, correct?
Yes.
Yes.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Make a motion to...
Adjourn?
No.
Oh, no, not, you got the kids.
Withdrawn.
Going to new business?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Wait a minute. Mr. Chairman, did we just pass...
Yep, we voted twice.
The amendment?
To send it to the council.
Okay. Can you announce the vote, please?
Everything was unanimous.
Unanimous.
Both votes were unanimous.
Correct.
Thank you.
I just voted for the amendment.
Mr. Chairman, with regards to new business item four, I would like to make a motion that the ordinance committee approve the approved ordinance for the new youth campground at Short Beach listed as number 17-01.
Second.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to add a, an amendment to the ordinance. I'd like to add F, that all youth organizations shall abide by the nondiscriminatory policies set forth by the town of Stratford.
I'll second that.
Discussion?
Good one.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 I'd like to offer another amendment, please. Regarding the comments we heard at public forum, that there is some kind of identification with, whether it's uniform or however the Short Beach Committee decides, and Parks and Rec decide to identify both students and leaders at the beach clearly, so that we know who's down there, so that people don't just kind of join up, or show up there late at night, and we don't know who they are. I think that'd be a recommendation to them. I don't know if we need to add it to the ordinance now. I'm going to defer to Mr. Llewellyn, if you think that would be something to add now, or if we could add it later.
I think we could probably address that through rules and regulations. I wouldn't want to kind of make it specific to a uniform. I know we have scouts here, and people here from, from ship 101 that are kind of in designated uniforms, or already pre-assigned shirts, but I would think if a, a group wanted to make use of the beach, and, and they put in their application, that their kids would all be wearing plain white t-shirts, that they should have the opportunity to just be wearing plain white t-shirts as their means of identification, as opposed to having to go out and make shirts up, or have to use their identifying uniforms for an overnight campout.
I'm just thinking, like, just to clarify, when I go into a public building, even at the state, when I'm up at the state, I get a lanyard, and the lanyard has my, it just has something that identifies me as supposed, I'm supposed to be here. I don't know if there's something like that that's been talked about, if that's something that's talked about in committee, or if that should be part of the ordinance.
Mr. Antezzo?
I just want to comment that every group that goes in there has to get a permit, and I'm sure the person that's bringing the group, the adult who's present, can identify the people. I don't think we have to go through a big rigmarole to see who's got the right outfit on.
If you're down at, if you're down at the basketball courts, or you're down the other end of the beach, which every kid in the world knows how to get down there, now when someone approaches me, "Oh, I'm with them," you know, that's, that could happen. I was 16 once, too, you know.
Mr. Chase?
Yeah, we could go on and on and on. I think Mr. Llewellyn adequately addressed the issue. This can be, this can be adopted under the rules and regulations of the commission.
Mr. Collins?
Just a thank you to the individuals that laid out the campground, and that took the initiative to organize it so well. It's sort of like a perfect Eagle Scout project, if that's a fair characterization. It's, it's a larger scale than a typical project, but it's going to be a large benefit for the town, and it's going to be a beautiful asset to Short Beach, and thank everyone for their work in bringing it to where it is today.
Mr. Chairman, I continue with having made the motion as amended by Mr. Posner.
Where are the, the Sea Scouts? I saw them all go into 213. Why don't they come out here for this?
Move the question on the amendment?
Second.
All those in favor of amending the...
Of moving the question.
Moving.
Moving the question.
Aye.
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 We got to wait for them before we vote.
All those...
Let's have them out first.
We have to vote on the amendment first.
They're here, they're here.
We didn't vote on the amendment, we just moved the question.
Yes, we voted on the amendment.
We just...
I, I moved, I asked to move the question.
We voted on the amendment.
No, now we need to vote.
So we vote on Mr. Posner's amendment to the resolution?
We voted.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 So now one, one final vote?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman?
Motion on the table to...
The motion on the table is to approve as amended. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Motion passed.
All right. Motion passed.
Mr. Chairman, I move we adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.